Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Garden City Zoning Board of Appeals. Wednesday, February 26, 2020, at 6:35. Our first order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag. Everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Would you take the role, please?
Chairperson may.
President.
Commissioner Soupy. Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton. Commissioner Richard.
President.
Our next item is approval of the agenda. If I can have a motion.
Motion made and approved the agenda. It's seconded.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any comments or questions? Take the role, please.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye. Our next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on an item not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. To approval of minutes from special meeting of December 18, 2019.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Motion's made to approve minutes.
I'll second it.
And supported. Any corrections, comments? Hearing none, would you take the role?
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Commissioner Richard.
I abstained, I wasn't present.
Commissioner.
You can still vote on it. We need.
I am up.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Chairperson may.
Aye. Okay, moving on to business items. First, I'd like to point out that we have a new format for our agenda. And that basically this was provided to provide more information to the public before and during the public hearing. And to provide a greater sense of order to the meetings. So primarily, I would like to ask the members to simply follow the agenda and hold their questions and comments until the public hearing is closed. Okay, starting out, first item is variance request for 31051 Ford Road. Consideration of a request for two variances for drive-through dimensional requirements of section 154.154A and B. Get us started? Can we have a report from Mr. Ortega?
Yes. Good evening. We're here tonight for variance requests made by the property owner for the King Cone existing ice cream location, ice cream restaurant. The applicant is interested in operating his facility 24, excuse me, 12 months out of the year, year-round. In order to do this, he approached the planning department and we discussed it with him. The business has been there for an extended period of time, to the point that he actually had never received special use approval for any kind of drive-through. In the past, apparently, there was a drive-through a long time ago. And this use never has utilized any kind of drive-through. So it's mainly operated as a seasonal use for ice cream. The requirement for a drive-through restaurant requires special use approval. So the applicant has been in front of the planning commission. And they, the planning commission at their meeting did recommend that the applicant receive special use approval by council. In addition to that, the review indicated that our planning commission, our requirements for drive-throughs have two specific dimensional standards that are normally applied for any type of new drive-through location. So just stepping back for a moment, I'm sure we're all aware that the King Cone existing ice cream restaurant is located on the south side of Ford Road. It's located east of Merriman. Once again, it's operated year-round. Site is approximately 10,000 square feet and it's actually in our C2 zoning district. With regards to the requirements for a drive-through restaurant, it does require two specific requirements that the site has not meet. First being that the, it says specifically, building shall have 150 feet minimum of frontage. The existing site layout has 100 feet of lot frontage on Ford Road. Second requirement is that the minimum distance between driveways, providing the off-site ingress or ingress, shall be at least 65 feet measured from the two closest driveway curves. And this existing site does have two driveways. However, they are currently a 19-feet distance between the two closest curves. So the applicant is looking basically for 50-foot variance from section 140 point, 140 paragraph A for the 100-foot rather than 150. And for 140B rather than the 65-foot separation distance, asking for the existing 19-feet separation distance to be sufficient. With regards to the first standard, the most relevant fact is the issue that the site is an existing lot, an existing facility. And there are adjacent properties operating directly adjacent to the site. So there's no opportunity for acquisition of additional lot frontage in order to meet this 150-foot standard. And the intent also is to have enough clearance on a major thoroughfare so that any new curb cuts, when installed, would have enough separation distance and there would not be any kind of negative impacts resulting from two new driveways or a driveway into a site from a drive-through activity. Drive-through activities in a normal situation are from usually fast foods or banks or nowadays even pharmacies. And they typically have a constant, a relatively constant stream of volume exiting that site and causing and interacting with the oncoming traffic. This site, once again, has existed for an extended period of time. In the summertime, there are a lot of people coming in and out of that site. And to the best of our knowledge, that those locations doesn't have any type of increased negative impact on the accidents or, on any accidents on Ford Road or any familiarity by people to not understand that there's a decent amount of traffic volume coming out of that curb cut, those two curb cuts, and they're entering into the site, which right now, the way it functions, and as proposed, the western curb cut is the entrance into the facility. You go southbound on the property, around the building, and then you exit on the eastern curb cut. There's also the opportunity, actually, for people to exit via the alley located in the south portion of the site. Then they can either turn east or west and go to the, either to over to Merriman on the west or to the street to the east and then exit the facility in that way. So this is a pre-existing situation in which the site functions adequately and even in a high-volume situation in the summers. And as proposed, when it's operating year-round, the applicant has even indicated that the amount of volume coming out of the site is going to be pretty negligible. Because while he, while his reasoning for the site is because of the need to have some income coming out of the facility rather than being completely shut down in the winter months, he'll have some income coming through. So that's the need for the use and the need for the driveway. So, excuse me, drive-through, so that customers will be able to drive up. And I guess they'd be more willing to purchase ice cream even on a day like today if they can stay in their car and not have to get out and go into the, walk up, stand on Ford Road and try and order ice cream. So with regards to the first, the requirement of 150-foot minimum frontage, we believe the physical characteristics of the, here, excuse me, physical characteristics of this lot create a practical difficulty for compliance with the 150-foot standard. And that would necessitate the requested variance. And I kind of jumped ahead of myself, but basically, the, in a similar situation, the 65-foot separation distance required of any new drive-through in the city is to make sure that new conflict, new access points will have a safe distance between each other so that any kind of traffic conflict points created with the, with the traffic, with turning movements, either entering the site or exiting the site onto the major thoroughfare, would have the opportunity to have an increased site distance and increased distance so that both, all drivers can have the opportunity to react. Once again, all the existing characteristics that I've just indicated, the fact that it's been an existing use, we believe, basically, the, these existing characteristics of the site and everyone's familiarity with these existing conditions have, the site has benefited from pre-history and by operating in this way. It's been operated for that amount of time, so therefore, people are familiar with it. So therefore, the benefit of a 65-foot separation isn't as prevalent because, once again, it's existing. So we believe that the, the physical characteristics of not being able to purchase additional property either to the east or west and to have an increased distance between the driveways creates that practical difficulty and then necessitates requested variance. Moving on to the different characteristics, it's basically, majority of these other also fall into the reasoning for the practical difficulty. But however, substantial justice would be provided to the applicant because other drive, existing sites do have drive-throughs that currently do not meet that 65-foot separation. So therefore, substantial justice would be provided to this applicant by allowing him to operate in the, a drive-through on this site. Public safety and welfare, as we mentioned, we don't believe there's any kind of increased accident incidents in this location due to these driveways existing and their close proximity to each other. As far as we know, there isn't any increased number at this location comparative to anywhere else along Ford Road. Preservation of property rights, as other, you know, other sites in the C2 do have the ability to have drive-through restaurants and operate with these kind of not ideal but familiar configurations. So therefore, allowing this site to function with a drive-through preserve their property rights. Once again, there's no safety hazard, to the best of our knowledge. The impact, there's no real negative impact on land values by allowing a drive-through exist, the existing location. The neighborhood character is currently commercial, all up and down Ford Road. So it's a very commercial location. And that increased economic activity in the winter months isn't going to, will not negatively impact any adjacent properties. As I mentioned, properly, properly, well, it's orderly development and traffic flow. Once again, it's an existing situation that's not going to, not going to disturb what's been, that's pre-existing. It's not going to disturb anything by granting these variances because it's already, is, in our opinion, orderly currently and the traffic flow functions well. Relationship to adjacent land uses, you know, once again, this is a commercial corridor and it is well-known to most residents of the community that this site is, functions this way. So in the end, we would recommend that the ZBA grant the variances as requested by the applicant based on compliance with the ordinance requirements, based on the finding of fact that compliance with these ordinance requirements would be necessarily burdensome, that the existing driveway has existed and operated for a significant amount of time without any recent traffic accidents, and that the physical characters of the lot create the need for the practical, create a practical difficulty for compliance with these standards. At the appropriate time, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Next, would the applicant like to come up to the podium and give us any information about your application?
Nothing new, other than, I mean, it is a tough business, ice cream business, given that the business is so dependent on the weather. And to be able to offer the service to the residents of Garden City, I think would be an added benefit. It would definitely be good for me also. And because it's during the off-season months, you know, from September, from October through end of March, the overall capacity would be much less than it is in the summer. You know, at summer, we operate 100% capacity. Technically, that's our peak season. And since the drive-through operate during the off-season, any traffic flow through the site will be at least 70% less than what would be in the summer. And it's more just to, I guess, relieve some of the stress of the business, given that it is so weather-related and so, you know, if it's a hot summer, it slows business down. If it's a wet summer, it slows business down. And this helps kind of even it out by creating, you know, some additional income in the winter months. So other than, you know, we greatly appreciate it if the board would approve the variances. And I'll thank you for that. Any questions I could answer?
We may have some for you later. If you, if there's nothing else, you can.
No, that's all, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we'll open the hearing to the general public. Does anyone wish to comment on the, the application for the two variances? That would be the time to approach podium. You have three minutes to make comments if you wish. Again, I'll ask, does anyone wish to make comment in public hearing? No, seeing no one. Are there any written communications to include in the record?
No written communications.
Nothing? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing at 6:53. Next order would be the, the board's option to, for discussion and questions if they have any. But before we go into that, I have to explain to the applicant that while we have five people here, only four of us can vote because I voted at the planning commission. So I'm not allowed to vote tonight on the application. And we need four affirmative votes to pass your variances. If you would care to wait until we have more people attending, because right now, we're short two members at the table. It would be your option, we could table this to the next meeting. Or we can go ahead and make, proceed tonight? Very good. Okay, if anyone wished to comment, have a question? Yes?
I kind of have a sheet full here. Would you like all of us to speak just on number one, number two, number three? Or would you like to hear everything at once?
Why don't you go down the list of questions that you have?
All right, number one, I fully agree, there's not enough traffic to the closest business to warrant any kind of traffic conflicts. Rock Vages and King Cone of Boltzmann, Staples in the city. I think we all know that and I wore up there several times a week. It's never an issue. Number two, I was just curious, as it reads out substantial justice and it reads out in here, other properties in the district similar to the lot. If we have examples of that and if they were granted special variance or were they just built at a time and we changed the rules after they were built? And that's why there's similar properties?
I can't speak specifically, but our, our rules have changed in the 90s and I'm sure we have quite a few businesses that were operating before that. Do you have any specific examples?
I don't have any specific examples. I will, will let you know that at the planning commission recently, on the same side of this block at the corner of Merriman and Ford Road, that Metro PCS vacant site has recently been approved to be operating as a checkers. And those two drive-throughs actually just meet their requirement for a drive-through. But it existed, I think it started, it was a fast-through restaurant back in the 70s. Or late 77, 77, I don't know. We were able to hunt down when it was approved. And that was approved back in the 70s and there was not.
King Cone was?
No, no, excuse me, the chicken restaurant at the corner.
I believe it was Church's Chicken at that time.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
And that one was approved for their locations and they just so happened to meet our standards. There are definitely other driveway locations in the, in the city that, to the best of my knowledge, have operated for an extended amount of time with their existing configuration. And if I were to measure their distance now, they probably would not meet our current standard. And they operate, because they've continued operation, they haven't ceased and they've allowed, they've been allowed to operate in that situation. We, to the best of my knowledge, we haven't had any variances asked for in this situation. But there are several locations in which they have.
Okay.
Don't meet these two standards.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, something, if it came before my time, you know, something say eight, nine years prior, if it came to the ZBA and they granted it or if they were just kind of grandfathered in and that's how the existing came to be. Moving on to number three, public safety and welfare. I do have somewhat of a concern on that. I feel that a drive-through creates dangers to pedestrians more so than the traffic that's there. When you get out of your car, you go, you get back in your car, then you drive off. At a drive-through, my main concern is you're putting money away, you're grabbing your ice cream, you're going. There is approximately, I'll say, 12 feet between that window and the sidewalk. Don't, really, the only thing I'd like to see added to a site plan, and I don't even know if that would come on our recommendation or if I would go, have to go back to planning, is some kind of stanchions mounted right there to differentiate driveway and walkway. If we have four, five, six-year-old kids standing right there and somebody putting a dollar into their pocket as they're pulling onto Ford Road, I think it creates much more a danger than somebody that just got done with their ice cream. Kids are buckled in and they're ready to go.
Well, we, we do have the ability to approve with conditions. So if there's something like that, that we feel is necessary, I believe we could add that to the.
And then just for the record, being familiar with the work that would need to go on, it would be at minimal cost to add concrete stanchions. It's nothing that's going to cost you, you know, $50,000. It's not going to be outrageous. And to me, I just think that that would really help. Also, with any kind of foot traffic traveling west, even though it wouldn't be blocking them, they would see it. I think it would call attention to it and they'd be like, well, what's that doing? And at least make them aware of their surroundings.
Possibly, also adding some signage would be beneficial, watch for pedestrians.
Very much so, even just paint it on the sidewalk, something like that. But something to differentiate that because it's, I, it really concerned me thinking about of just what a short distance it is. And as I mentioned prior, I wore up there several times a week. So I'd see, you know, I know very well of how close it is.
While I agree with your concerns there, I don't think that the particular variances affect that.
Adding a drive-through does.
Well, adding a drive-through, period. But if they, if they met all the other criteria, they'd be able to add the drive-through. So, I mean, the two dimensional variances that we're looking at, I don't think impact that situation.
But with the.
But we can als, we can always add that condition.
Add in? Okay, yeah, it's, I would think that it would be in relation to this, just with our frontage and distance egress to driveway. I don't know how we roll that out.
Mr. Ortega?
Yeah, just a point of information for you. This was, this once again requires special use approval and the planning commission was concerned about operating both the drive-through and the pedestrian windows. So the applicant actually indicated because of, they want to use this during the winter, they agreed and they're going to only operate this, the, either, either the drive-through operate in the winter months and then the drive-through will be shut down and then only the pedestrian windows will be open in the summer months. So I believe it was from October to, October to March, it'll be used as a drive-through and then the drive-through will shut down and then the pedestrian windows will open.
We were three cents, you were three lines away from that exact question. That is awesome, so I. Yeah, and like I say, literally three lines away and it's in big black letters on my paper, will it be opened off-season only is stated there. And then we reviewed it a couple of times. To me, that makes a huge difference with my concerns about people because December, chances of me and my daughter being standing outside? Zero. So, you know, it's middle of July, 100 kids from the baseball team. So that, that makes a huge difference.
Well, that is another condition that can be added to the variance, the.
We can stipulate.
Months of operation. Yeah.
That might be a good idea to put that little barrier by the window, by the driveway. Just a little one anyways, all year round because, you know, kids standing around there and cars do come around through that other, out that other driveway. And it might be a safety factor just for people standing around. Like they say, kids, a little barrier there and keep them towards that side and that. Exactly.
There's at least three or four on that side. There's at least three or four plants on that side.
Mr. Richard, do you have anything else?
Moving into actually how it's zoned and if we have a date of when they were granted special use. C1, 154.2715 is ice cream parlors without drive-through. 154.286, number seven, C2 is standard restaurant without drive-through. 154.30112, which falls into C3, would be restaurant.
Oh, it's C2 with a special land use, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, they, they were granted the special land use?
They, they were at the previous planning commission meeting and the planning commission recommended approval. It's going to go in front of the city council for their consideration.
One of the conditions on that approval was them getting the variances here.
Right. Okay, okay. So it hasn't been granted yet? I was just curious because it made a big difference moving from C1 without drive-through to a C3 with drive-through.
Yeah, well, it's a C2.
They're in the progress of that or in the process of that?
Yeah, they don't, they, they don't have to change their zoning, but they do need approval for special variance.
Yeah, variance for that property.
Another issue I saw, and I don't know if this would be something that we would share to speak of on a special meeting because it doesn't have to do with what he's requesting as a variance here.
on a special meeting, cause it doesn't have to do with what he's requesting as a variance here, but screening, cause I was looking at the full site plan and that's the only building from Brant to Merriman without proper screening for any C one, C two, C three, with residential being behind it with-
Yeah, that was, uh, looked at at the planning commission. And screening wasn't required, I don't believe.
The problem with the screening, if you put screening there, you got that apartment straight behind it. And they backed straight out of that parking lots to get around the cars. So then, if you put screening, that keeps them from going even further back. In other words, you're eliminating their distance from the apartment.
Yeah, I totally get that, it's every time I leave, I take the alleyway up to Merriman, yet it, it would be a huge pain to me, but, but-
Right to the apartment buildings.
Right, um, yeah, that's my, my, my choice of exit there. But while looking over it, it came to my attention of, A, when, when was that variance given? And B, is that something we need to look at because moving forward-
They didn't get a variance, but the planning commission has the ability and the right according to the ordinance to make a determination of whether they need that or not. And they decided not to require it.
Okay.
Cause one other, just a point of information, one other aspect of that is while the, the six-foot screen is, is a requirement on the property line, it also gives the property owner directly to the rear on the other side of the alley to ask to have the, have the screen placed on their side of the property. So therefore they're screened from both the alley and the, um, activity on the commercial piece of property for that screening. Because, because, I believe the planning commission felt that because that screen was chose not to be placed on the site by the property, by the residents and chosen not to be placed on their property because of the reasoning for allowing for, uh, easy, uh, clearance from, site clearance for their parking vehicles. Then the planning commission also, because of the special use, could have required the screening or could have capitulated basically to the residence preference, and the residence preference being to not have the screen. So that's why they felt it was also appropriate to let the, to not have the screening there.
Works for me, I'm just looking to save us a year, five years, ten years down the road and we have somebody else come in that wants a gas station and go, they don't have it and wanna know why, so that precedent had been set.
It's still not precedent setting, we don't set precedents here, so it-
Well, planning-
The next applicant that comes in has to do it on their own merit, not based on anybody else's. So we, we deal with each one separately and we don't, we don't really have to be concerned with setting precedents.
Wait, not so much on, on his request, that I understand, but zoning in general of, well, they don't have a screen and hey, to me, I mean, you got, now I'm aware, so I, I was unaware of that if it was something, just because the building was so old, it's been there. You know, it could have been a million different things of why it wasn't there, but I, I would just hate to run into that issue down the road. So, but as long as we're clear on that, I'm a happy man. That's all I have and, uh, I will end my comments, but I would like to put stipulations of months of operation. If, if we do move for approval, if we have to write that on record or if it's just spoken word when we vote for it.
Okay, that's, that would be part of the motion. Anyone else wish to make a comment or have a question?
Covered everything I was thinking about.
No other comments or questions? Does someone now care to make a motion?
I motion to approve variances, it was A and B on this one? Yes.
Well, or do we have to do one and one? Yeah, let's do them separately.
You could do them together, but it just to make it easiest, most streamlined, or, you know,
Okay.
To track down, if we have to look in the future, I would recommend a motion, separate motion.
Separate, okay. I motion, excuse me. I'd like a motion to approve item A, section one fifty-four, one four oh building, she'll have one fifty, a hundred and fifty foot minimum frontage. Existing site layout has a hundred foot lot frontage. Uh, I'd like to grant the variance with the stipulation that months of operation do occur between Oct- or, between October and March and drive-through operations would cease after March. I, I would like to say the end of March.
It's in there.
Yes.
October first to March thirty first.
October first to March thirty first?
But with that there, it's, once we grant that variance, it's no ifs, ands, or buts, we can't change our mind to stay open in August, correct?
Right.
That's it.
Okay.
Is there a support?
I support it.
Okay, motion made in support. Any questions on the motion? Questions from the public? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Obeying. Motion's carried, you can contact Mr. Ortega for details. Uh, your next order of business, of course, is to get your special use approved through the city council. We now have recommendation from the planning commission and you have the necessary variance here, so it's up to the council to make that decision. Yes.
We need to do- Want to do a vote for variance B before?
Yes. Another motion?
I make a motion that we approved the variance for one fifty-four point one four zero B.
Port.
Months?
Do we need to add months to this one also?
Same, same time restriction.
From October first to March thirty first.
Okay.
I'll second.
You want some maiden's supported, any questions? Take your role, please.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Mason.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye, er, pardon me, abstain. Okay, as I said, it's up to the city council, uh, when will this come before them, Brian, do you know?
Next available meeting, so as long as I-
So the next meeting, I'd have to check, but they would have to reschedule a public hearing, cause we still haven't, we still-
It's a week, week from before, we have to-
So we can-
We still have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, so we can, we can get them on the agenda for the next council meeting to schedule a public hearing.
To start the process.
Um, and then we'll do that public hearing and then the council can decide at the meeting if they have a public hearing. So it would just depend on, you know, the earliest available date you can have the public hearing.
We'll, we'll work on the paperwork, it'll turn to tomorrow, so.
Okay, next item. Twenty-nine nine oh one Ford Road, consideration of a request for three variances for dimensional screening and buffering requirements from section one fifty-four point three seven two A nine and appendix A footnote E. Uh, this is a, uh, request from the people opening a banquet hall at that location. And they wanna convert an area that is currently used for, uh, uh, water retention to underground retention and turn that into a parking lot. It's currently zoned VP vehicular parking. So, we start out with Mr. Ortega's report?
Yes, good evening. As mentioned, this site is at, located on the south side of Ford Road at the intersection with Brant. And it is the existing, previously operated CVS store, currently vacant site. The site, the commercial where the, where the building is located and the parking that has frontage on Ford Road is zone C two. However, to the rear of the site and is part of the, part, and is now a part of the lot combined with this location is the existing detention pond to the south. That existing detention pond is actually zoned VP vehicular parking. The applicant came before the planning commission and didn't receive site plan approval for operating a banquet facility in the building. The capacity for the site was approved for a maximum based on the number of parking that can fit on the, on the site. So currently the existing parking facilities will fu- will service the building. The applicant has proposed to, once, once again, utilize, uh, cover over the existing detention pond, have that as a underground storage and then have parking on, on, on the top too. And that would, the effect of that would be to increase the total capacity of, uh, within the proposed, uh, within the existing building, continuing of course upon also any, any compliance with fire code standards. So, when we were looking at this site and looking at, and we were discussing at the planning commission, they, in order to locate a, uh, to create a parking space, a parking lot within the vehicular parking district, there are certain setback in, uh, screening requirements. As mentioned, they are from one fifty-four dot three seventy-two A paragraph nine, that a ten-foot setback should be provided between the side or rear property line and the edge of the parking lot. So the ten-foot, uh, so when it comes to the rear property line, the applicant is proposing that that distance be actually be five feet, six inches from, of a screening rather than the required ten. And on the west side, and currently, uh, the retention, the detention pond is actually surrounded by a six-foot masonry wall. That, that's the other part of the requirement. So on the property line with the residents to the west and the residents to the south, there are, there is an existing six-foot masonry wall. So the way, so the screening is technically located on the interior of the parking lot. The intent being to soften the wall and to, to, you know, basically to soften the wall and provide, and limit the amount of, of, uh, hard surface. As mentioned, the applicant, it looks like it's about, uh, five foot six from, or, from the rear property line. And the wa- and so, in addition to requiring a ten-foot separate, uh, landscape buffer area screen on the west side with the, adjacent to the residence, the, the vehicular parking also requires that there be either, that there be a, uh, front yard setback equal to the front yard setback of any residential, adjacently residential zone property provided on the corner lot that there are, is a house turned and, and facing that block. On corner lots, if they, if there is a house that, that is, um, basically if there was a house, if this house was facing, their, their main door was facing Brant, then their front yard is considered Brant and they would have to have our thirty-foot front yard setback requirement. However, if that, if the house is turned the opposite way and it's facing the street to the south, then the other, the opposite, um, uh, street is their front yard. And on the side yards, side street, they only have a required nine-foot setback. So for this, for this particular block, because there's, in this particular block, the, um, the house to the south is facing the street to the south. And it's similar to the other, the house on the east side of Brant, it's facing southward, the front door. There is no residents utilizing Brant as their front yard. So therefore appendix A footnote E says that the minimum street setback shall be nine feet. So that in effect requires a nine-foot setback in landscape screen along Brant for the parking lot. The applicant has chosen to do with the ten-foot requirement on the west and nine-foot requirement on the east. They are proposing to split the difference basically and say, and have approximately eight feet, six inches of landscape screening buffer area on both the east and west side where these ten-foot and nine-foot respective requirements are. So those are the dimensions that we're dealing with in the, in the, um, the required situation. So once again, for our variances, we take a look at the different characters, uh, different, uh, approval criteria to see if the requested variances would meet this criteria. Basically, so when you look at this site, the applicant has required, um, depth for parking spaces of eighteen feet, has a required minimum, uh, access drive, maneuvering lane of twenty feet. And therefore that's, as a result, that's why in order to have parking spaces on both the east and west side of the lot, a double, double-loaded parking, uh, lot, that's why he doesn't have, uh, the, the dimensions to have the ten-foot setback on the east, west, and the nine-foot on the east for landscaping. So it, so if the, if our standards were applied in full effect and there was the additional one foot, six inch screening on the east and one foot, six inch screening on the west, the result would be that he would not be able to have a whole bank of parking and effectively cut the amount of parking, uh, on the site in half. So we believe that that would be unnecessarily burdensome to go through the, go through, um, and provide this parking space and then only get half the capacity. Whereas if the result of full compliance is to provide the additional one foot, six inch of, uh, screening, you know, it's, it's pretty, it'd be pretty debatable to indicate that an additional one foot of screening on the Brant side would soften the parking lot anymore than the eight foot that's going to be provided. Nine foot is required, and actually, when you look at it, nine foot is required on the Brant side. He's got eight foot six on that side, so it's another six inches on the Brant side what he's doing. So as proposed, you know, the additional, full compliance with the standards would be unnecessarily burdensome because the overall effect of having additional screening is just not so, very substantive. Uh, he's, he's chosen to comply with both east and west side screening by providing some on both sides. So due to the fact that these, that would be unnecessarily burdensome, we would recommend that the east and west side variances be granted. When it comes to the rear yard setback and the ten-foot requirement, as I mentioned, he's providing, I believe, about five feet, six inches, uh, to the rear. If he were to be in full compliance with our standard, provide the ten-foot on the rear, the actual net effect would be just if losing two parking spaces. If the two were just removed, there would be additional, there would be ten-foot of screening be provided and then there'd be a little bit more space between that screening and the additional parking. So we believe that that is not necessarily burdensome, it's just a minimal, two, you know, reduction in two parking spaces. While, um, so as proposed, the applicant would, would have thirty-two parking spaces in this configuration. If he were to comply with the rear yard setback, then he would just have a thirty-foot, uh, excuse me, thirty parking spaces on the site. Still a significant number, still, um, going to add to the capacity for the, for the building and full compliance will not necessarily negatively impact the, the overall result. So we don't believe that, I mean, it would not, it would not be exceedingly burdensome for him to reduce, remove those two parking spaces on the south side and provide, provide the ten-foot requirement. So we would not recommend, well, move on. So, uh, and as similar with our other variances, as we go through the remaining criteria, look at what's required for approval, these existing conditions substantiate the, the need for these other criteria, such as substantial justice, there are other locations in which, um, well, excuse me, they're, they, granting the variance would provide the applicant with substantial justice by allowing him to fully utilize all his land for both the required, uh, stormwater detention and also maximizing his ability to, uh, increase the, um, capacity of the site, uh, excuse me, of the building. Allow him to get the most economic return on the site. Public safety and welfare would not be negatively impacted by these variances. There is, um, some screening to be provided and, and additionally, the, the proposed configuration is going to exit to the north. He's not gonna, he's not asking for any additional curb cuts on Brant. So the location of parking on this property would not, um, create additional, uh, issues with any public safety issues. Public safety or welfare issues. When it comes to extraordinary circumstances, the lot in itself, lots on Ford Road can sometimes be pretty, they, they have historically been platted to be pretty narrow. But, I mean, he, he's, so he's working with as much as he can, and I believe the proposal is, is satisfactory because he's, uh, beginning the ability to provide the parking, and he also is attempting to provide screening as required by the ordinance. So he's meaning, trying to meet the intent of the ordinance by utilizing what he has and, um, and providing, uh, screening. There, once again, there's no safety hazards, no impact on land values, uh, you know, that, we're not aware of any evidence that locating parking spaces, parking lots directly adjacent to properties would negatively impact, um, like the property values, uh, within the city, along Ford Road, along Cherry Hill, along Warren, Inkster, you know, all our main thoroughfares. We have commercial properties that are directly adjacent to, uh, residences. And it's a, it's just a, it's a known characteristic within the city and not only within Garden City, but within most suburban communities that along major thoroughfares, if you live close to them, you're gonna be, probability of living close to a, um, parking lot. Either that or a commercial site. So, I don't believe there's any real evidence to support the fact that have, being adjacent to parking is gonna substantially negatively impact any land values. Neighborhood character, this is directly adjacent to a commercial existing uses, so I know, so it's gonna be consistent with that. And the use, the uses themselves aren't gonna be directly adjacent to the residences. And when it comes to, uh, impact on adjacent properties, uh, you know, the, as proposed, the applicant is, I know currently, the existing trees on that, along Brant are pretty substantial. Hopefully, the construction won't be, uh, too negative on their, their health. However, as a layperson, I believe if, it's gonna be pretty hard to try and construct that parking lot and put in that detention, uh, system without disturbing the root system of those existing trees. So the applicant is, has indicated they're gonna make their, do their best effort to, um, protect the trees. Typically, that's done by not disturbing, once again, to the root zone, which is at the edge of the drip line of those trees. So once again, I don't know if they'll be able to do that. You may wish to consider in terms of providing sufficient screening and buffering on Brant, maybe, uh, shifting some of the landscaping from the western property line where, you know, it's not necessarily going to benefit the existing residents because they're on the other side, the, the landscaping is on the other side of the six-foot wall. So they're not really gonna be seeing this landscaping that's required. Perhaps shifting them, if you feel that screening along Brant would be, uh, would be more appropriate, to be more, to be enhanced, that'd be an option. So in the end, based on the proposed, uh, configuration and based on the intent of the ordinance, and our findings of fact, we do recommend that the, uh, the ZBA grant, the variances for the west side ten-foot, uh, landscape screening and the east side nine-foot Brant road screening. We also recommend that the, the denial, the denial of the rear yard setback because there's no, uh, compliance with that standard is not excessively burdensome on the, on the proposed use. And our findings of fact are listed on page, uh, page five for you, summarized that way. Take any questions at the appropriate time.
Okay, would the applicant care to come up and, uh, give us any information?
Pardon?
Do you have any information you'd like to present to us tonight?
I mean, I think Mr. Ortega, uh, related reason. We are also willing, uh, in regards to the, the trees, if, uh, we spoke about that last time at the planning commission, to duplicate whatever we have, uh, available currently with landscape and also to kind of create a barrier, um, so they're not just, whoever's driving by, they're not seeing a, a parking lot. So if the trees do become damaged, uh, we mentioned that we would get the appropriate approvals to, um, whatever shrubbery and/or trees would have to be put back in its place. And then we also, I believe, uh, spoke about, uh, the planning commission, uh, putting, uh, bushes or something that's a little taller, kind of to block the, uh, view between tree, whatever tree is available. So I, I believe there's maybe six or eight feet in between every tree. So we would be placing shrubbery, um, all across that line.
Okay.
Whatever's appropriate.
That's not currently on your plan, though?
Uh, no, when we spoke about that, um, you, you said that, or the committee said that, uh, we would do the variance in regards of the parking lot. Um, and then whatever shrubbery was needed is, is gonna be in, uh, in our permitting for, once we get approved for everything else.
Okay.
Cause the entire deal was contingent on the actual parking lot, uh, being approved.
Right. Did you have anything else you wanted?
No, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. You wanted to say something?
This is, uh, my architecture, I'm sorry. Side orbit from orbit designing construction. Uh, just wanna address the, uh, buffer at the south end of the parking, uh, lot. We designed it in a way where we allow a three-feet maneuvering when you back up from the parking. Other than that, it would be a seven feet, nine inches if we go with a straight curb. Also, we provided some, um, a new curb and gutter at the entrance to that parking space, starting from the north side of that particular, uh, section. If we remove these and we can push the parking spaces up, that would be nice. But we, we figured maybe some extra, uh, greenery to separate the right-of-way and to separate the entrance to the, uh, parking spaces and so on and so forth. Kinda like gave it a, a more of a, uh, adequate, uh, design, if I may say so. Uh, other than that, if we can push them over, then we can provide at least the ten feet. It was a judgment call on this issue. But to make it short, it is about seven feet, nine, and then we took three feet for whenever a car is backing up from the parking space. So it has some maneuvering, um, depth, so they can back up and then go straight up north. Yep.
Okay.
And that's the only point I wanted to address with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to put my name?
Oh, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, well, uh, we'll open this to the general public. Seeing none, we can, uh, close the public hearing. There, were there any written communications?
Uh, there were no written communications.
There are no written communications, okay.
I'm gonna freak one day that there are, though. I'm gonna have my wife write, write something just.
On a day like today, somebody would like to just.
Okay, the, uh, public hearing is closed. This will open it to discussion by the, uh, board. I had a couple of things. I noticed that, you know, you've, you've attempted to kind of center your parking in the middle of the space that you have. So I was wondering if maybe it would be beneficial since most of the, uh, visual impact of the parking area will be from the street side. If we move that back the six inches that you're cutting into it and, in effect, we wouldn't require a, a variance, then we'd have the full nine feet on that side and only eight feet on the other side. Is there any reason you wouldn't wanna do that?
No, the difference kind of, I mean, it was just like, um, Mr. Ortega said, it was just a judgment call. We kind of just split the difference, but it's fine with us as well.
Yeah, I think, I think that would provide the, the most visual benefit by, uh, by moving it away from the street sensors. There's already a six-foot wall on the other side covering that. And you mentioned the fact that you would be willing to plant shrubs in between the trees on that side. We, I think that would be beneficial too. Is there any other, uh, comments, questions on the board?
I just had a question. That's a retention area. Now, and once they put a parking, if they put a parking lot in there and filled all that in, now retention is usually a drain off to keep the neighborhoods from flooding. All right? Cause I got that behind mine off of Cherry Hill. And I am concerned that if that is a drainage, a holding bend, in other words, to absorb the water, is that gonna end up being a, a bad thing for the neighbors? Um, there's my problem.
Yes. As part of site plan review, uh, part of, one of the conditions of approval is for them to receive, for the applicant to receive approval from Wayne County, uh, for the detention pond. Or whether it's retention, detention, however it is, the county action, just recently, they're revising their standards to ensure, uh, the most up-to-date and modern, uh, detention and retention requirements for the volume. So, well, however it functions now, it, it will be able to function, and actually probably to a higher degree because of the new standards. Uh, I've, I've heard from other residents that sometimes when, when there is a rain, that, that, that pond, that, the pond tends to get pretty deep, and then it stays a while. So whatever the volume that's coming in there, uh, the in, the applicant will be, uh, engineers will be discussing with Wayne County and do what Wayne County requires to make sure that it doesn't, it, it can't negatively impact the adjacent residents. That's the number one thing. Uh, and then it will function adequately to whatever, uh, Wayne County standards are, which, you know, are intended to actually, as, I'm not an engineer, but to the best of my knowledge, what Wayne County's trying to do is increase the capacity that stays on-site and minimize the amount of water that gets automatically dumped into pipes that automatically gets shifted downstream, if you will. So they're, they're trying to do their, their best to make sure that, um, to minimize any chance of a flooding situation by, whenever we are inundated with a big, huge rain, that someone downstream doesn't get hit with it, so.
Who's gonna be responsible for doing that?
Uh, the applicant's engineer will, and they will, uh, have to submit, before any building permits can be issued, we will have a letter from Wayne County saying their, their proposed, uh, engineering plans meet with Wayne County approval.
Hey, currently, the existing pond, it actually, I think, creates more of a hazard because we have standing water in there and it's not protected. It, uh, at times, after a heavy rain, it can be quite deep. So I think having underground retention is a much safer proposition, actually.
I agree, but I just wanna make sure before I okay it, you know.
Well, that's part of the process of having the approval in Wayne County, yeah.
Cause I'm not, I don't want eighteen hundred people to be flooded out. And I'm flooded out because everybody raised their level of ground and my backyard flooded.
Okay, just one at a time, please. Okay.
To Fred's, to Fred's point, the LA Fitness, with their retention pond, has fencing around it.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's the new requirement.
This retention pond has no fencing. Kids can wander in there and next thing you know, they're corpse, so.
Yeah, it could be a dangerous situation the way it stands now, cause it's not protected at all.
Been like that for tons of years.
For a long time. Doesn't mean it's not dangerous.
No, I, I understand that, but it's been.
Yes, I agree. Yes, sir.
Now, uh, I actually spoke with Kalu, who, he's in charge of the, um, uh, Wayne County Development. And he actually came up to the site with, um, an engineer. And it's our job to hire, uh, a third-party engineering firm. But, uh, they came up to the site and they said that this is extremely common. They're actually pushing for, for this because those retention ponds tend to work twenty-five to fifty percent, uh, more capacity than, um, just plain dirt and or sand, whatever might be underneath it. So they actually have a certain committee just for this, um, like Mr. Ortega mentioned that, um, for approvals. And, uh, they told me that once we put in the retention pond, it would actually function twenty-five to fifty percent better than what it currently is, and it's extremely, uh, much more safe.
Well, then, that's fine.
Yeah, and when it was built twenty years ago, throwing a bunch of clay down was just fine, and nobody cared where it went.
I've got more for you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. The newer system would be better, but I just wanted to make sure that there was gonna be that situation.
And I mean, Aldi as well, they're, they would be affected by.
Would affect your, your property too, in matter of fact.
Is there any other questions? Yes.
I only have a few on this one. Uh, A and B, uh, state that it's zoned VP vehicular parking district.
Yep.
Uh, yet site plan says C two, I believe.
The rest of it is zoned C, C two.
Was that from the get-go, from when CBS?
Yeah.
It, it has always been, it, so it's always been so? Okay, just curious. Um, it's, it wasn't noted anything on there. Another concern was will the parking lot lower the value to the property to the south and west? You know, it's, I, I consider it just a tree lot, basically. And to me, that's a little bit different than a parking lot. But if we're maintaining the wall, we're not doing anything else, and it's not gonna be, you know, like a Kroger where there's a million people there twenty-four, seven. We're, we're kinda good there. That's just a small concern, but we kinda touched on some of that. It made me feel better that walls are staying up. Another one going on to eleven, I, from my understanding, banquet center, correct, sir?
It's a banquet, yes, sir.
I, operations mainly on weekend, or do we plan on having?
It's probably gonna be in the high nineties of just weekends, yeah.
Okay. I had, my only concern was that it was adding thirty-two spaces that, that will impact traffic somehow, some way, whether it's on Ford Road or on Brant, on the weekends. And it's, a wedding gets out ten-thirty, a lot different than, we're, we're doing something every Tuesday or every Wednesday because they're holding meetings, and we have eighty-some cars exiting on Ford Road or the additional thirty-two, fifty cars coming out onto Brant, so.
Well, uh, if, if I'm correct, you're planning on having, uh, valet parking?
There is valet parking.
And so, they, the people won't all be leaving at once. It'll be kind of, you know, metered out.
So it, it'll be somewhat of an organized chaos when they leave. You'll, you'll be controlling when they leave?
Organized chaos, I like that.
Very good. And, uh, Mr. May, just to go back and assure my head heard what my ears heard, um, you suggested moving just six inches from the east line, correct, to, to fall into place?
Yeah, that's correct. And I'm suggesting we move the lot over six inches, so we have nine foot on the Brant side and then only eight foot up against the wall on the other side.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I don't think six inches will do much to the aesthetics. And I, kudos to you guys also for, it's, for wanting to add that and make it look a little nicer. And you guys kinda took up space that you could have used. For the record, I kinda, that weighed heavy on me, um, that they could've next had and got, you know, maybe extra space, extra six. But I, I think it, it beautifies the property more than just one huge open spot. There's gonna be shrubbery, I'm sure some kind of malt, something will be in there. I, I think it, it adds value and curb appeal for the people driving by on Brant. Say maybe you're leaving, getting Judd's Pizza every Tuesday night, and now you're looking at that.
Not that that ever happened.
Yeah, no, not at all, but, so, um, yeah, it, I did like the idea on that. So, just for the record, it's, I can appreciate needing the variance on the south end because of that. There was actually a thought process into it, and it wasn't just let's get as much as we possibly can.
So I've got a question.
Yes.
Just hypothetically, if we were to eliminate those two parking spots to the south to give you that setback, without any question at all, that affects the number of parking spaces. It affects the number of people you can have in the hall with the fire marshal and everything else. Any, any idea how many, how that reflects upon that? Do you lose eight people capacity or ten people capacity?
Seven, nine.
Six.
Six, yes.
Three per slot.
Okay. Okay.
And then we could lose one per employee if it was an unfortunate.
Okay.
Yeah, they would.
Our plan is to utilize that back parking because it is near Brant. We would utilize it for majority of our, half of it would be our staff. That way, that parking is not constantly in and out.
And it's twelve people on your staff, then?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, that would be our staff taking up the one, basically one side of it.
Okay.
And then that, those cars would not move the entire, not until it's completed.
Okay, just for everyone's information, too, the, the planning commission has discussed modifying the setback requirements in the VP district because we've had this situation come up before where we've had to give variances in order to allow a relatively small parking area to be used for what the VP district is supposed to be used for, rather than just ten-foot of green space inside already six-foot masonry wall for screening. So, that, that setback requirement may be changing in the near future, so, just for your information. I, personally, I would like to see us forget about the variance on the Brant side, give them a two-foot variance on the, the west side of the lot. I don't know what everybody's feeling is on the south side. Do you wanna?
It's six inches, right?
I think that's.
No.
On the south side?
No, it's, on the south side, it's more than six inches because we have approximately three feet, I believe. It's about three feet.
Three feet, six inches.
Yeah, it's about three feet that we, it's.
Actually, it's two feet, three inches.
It's not even three feet.
Seven foot nine.
It's a couple inches among friends.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna make a whole lot of difference.
No.
So, you would be in favor, everyone would be in favor of allowing that, too, so, okay.
Yeah, that, that was kind of my.
Well, why don't we, why don't we go with that, the?
Allowing it the way they got it.
Two-foot, three-inch variance for the south side, a two-foot variance for the west side, and no variance for the east side. And as a condition, I would like to see that we include shrubbery between the trees on the Brant side, too, which they've already agreed to pretty much.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All the landscaping, the plumbing, would you not?
Yeah.
I actually brought some renderings for you for the, for our last conversation at the city council meeting.
Oh, have you?
As well, yes.
Yeah, we, well, we'd like to see them.
Can I hand them to you?
Yeah, bring them up.
I know it wasn't required, but I remember we said we wanted to keep to the aesthetics of the actual neighboring buildings and everyone really liked the way that building was set up, so we kept the original colors.
Oh, you're adding a portico there for the drive?
Yes, we'll obviously apply for it, but this is just a preliminary rendering, just so you can kind of get a visual.
Oh, that's gonna be a lot of action when it is now.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, yeah, I certainly like the looks of it.
And seeing how it's our main downtown area is.
I like the idea there's no tumbleweeds.
No tumbleweed.
That's with the DBA's colors that were actually for the C-three zoning, which is a far straitrope.
Yeah.
Kind of to just keep with what's already accepted and approved.
Yeah.
That's just how we base our color schemes on.
I appreciate that.
I wish these were in our schematics, in our paperwork, it would've been nice.
Yeah, I think we literally finished it today.
That's very nice.
Thank you. We promise you, the final renderings is gonna look much, much better. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is not even final renderings, yeah.
And those little additions, you're gonna change and put little shrubs in there or something like that, the little barricade things?
I, I mean, whatever's in accordance with, with.
It's something pretty scrappy right now, you know, those little.
The existing plating?
The existing plating, all of this catalog currently.
Yes.
What was approved initially, and then we either are gonna replace some which are the same, whatever needs to be replaced, and/or, you know, we'll apply, obviously, for whatever changes that we want to make.
Very good, maybe a little add-in.
Are these gonna be windows on the north of the building?
So, our, our planning commission from last, our last meeting, they, the board mentioned that they liked those windows, so we kind of kept it, incorporated them around the building. They're not technically windows, they look like it.
Yeah, I was curious, the ones on Fort Road, if it was just facade within the, the pre- covered maybe, and?
I was curious that throughout the entire building.
Gotcha, very nice look.
It is a very nice.
That'll look good, why don't you pass those down and? Okay, is there any more questions, or?
No, I.
If, if not, entertain a motion?
Um, we have. Is A south?
A is the south side.
No, no, no.
Two, eight.
If I could just point out one thing with regards to that south side, technically, you may, you would measure it for, cause the ordinance requires it between the rear prop line and the edge of the parking lot. Because they're providing the, the three-foot-six cut into that seven-foot-nine inch for the turnaround, which I think is appropriate, and I think it, will make the function.
That's the dimension we'd have to use for the variance.
You have to use that dimension, so technically, from the, from the property line to the edge of the curb, and that, that closest point is four foot three, so then the, so to get up to ten feet, you need five foot, so, five foot eight?
We got a five foot six.
Five foot nine.
Five nine.
Five nine, so it'd be a five nine variance.
We'd need a nine, five nine variance.
Five nine variance.
And that's on the south.
Five nine variance, just kind of two foot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it's that closest point that the, the curve is, so, but it would make sense.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve item A from section one fifty-four, point three seven two A nine, and grant a variance in the distance of five foot nine inches to the south edge of the property.
There's support?
I support.
Oh, I was.
Support. Any comments? Take the roll, please.
Okay, Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Mason?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
You get to partake in this one.
B is the west side, we need a, a two-foot variance.
What's that?
We need a two-foot variance for B on the west side. Someone wants to make a motion for that?
I make a motion to accept the two-foot variance on section one fifty-four, point three seven two B.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. This is on the western side property line. Any comments or questions? Take roll, please.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Mason?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
And the street side, do we, we don't need a variance there because we're increasing that to nine foot, do we, do we need to deny the request?
I don't believe so, because the applicant has, has modified his plan and is no longer requesting that variance, cause he's going to modify it.
We just need the two approved variances.
I'm gonna say, we don't need to go on record with suggesting the six inches. Does that, do we need to make any mention of that, that that was suggested by the board just moving forward?
Well, could you put a footnote with the other?
Yeah, what we can do is, in the minutes, it will show the, you know, variance request A and B with the motion on it, and then, what for C, we can put a note on there that just says, you know, due to the revised, you know, change to B, it necess, you know, no longer.
We don't have to vote on it, you're just gonna put it in.
C, no longer necessary, so.
So, there's no vote on it, just put it in.
No action was taken, yeah.
Good. And they'll just add that extra, give more room to street, so.
Okay. I think you're all set, then, did you have a question?
I was gonna say thank you.
The guys did a good, the guys did a good job.
Thank you.
We say thank you.
Bus push is moving forward, guys.
Yeah, good luck, guys did a good job.
Thank you, we appreciate your contribution.
Thank you, we appreciate your building in Garden City.
No, let's take this one.
You want them back?
While we send you over the final, this is.
Yeah.
While we send you over, thank you gentlemen, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other business? Mr. King?
Drive safely, stay safe.
Richard?
Nope, I have nothing. Oh, no, I have nothing.
Tony?
Oh, where should I begin? Erica doesn't get home till nine, and I don't wanna give Maddie a shower, so, with that being said, do you guys remember it was August third of 2014? Wait, um, I do have one question. Is there a booklet, a pamphlet, a PDF, anything that we can get that maps out all of our zones and what everything is as of now, only, I, I had two questions today.
Do you have a copy of the zoning ordinance?
Pardon?
Do you have a copy of the zoning ordinance?
I believe I do, is it in there?
It's in there.
Do they have an updated map?
We actually, we'll be updating the map, there was just a rezoning that was approved, so what we can do is make sure that now, whenever we update the zoning maps, we'll give everyone.
Make them bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're so small, you can't really tell anyways. And I, I, one other thing before he has to go take the bath for the little one. I was just wondering, you guys send out these pamphlets to put us out in our books, but you guys never put the holes in them, stuff like that, come down to City Hall and have you guys punch the holes in them, so.
Yeah, I believe that's been mentioned.
Yeah.
In other words, when I get them from you guys, it's nice to put a bit.
The other thing was.
I will bring you a three-hole punch, and you can keep it at home just for you.
How much you think I would use a three-hole punch?
At least once a year.
Probably once. I gotta love you.
Mario, did you have anything?
Team player.
This time?
I'll come down to City Hall.
Brian?
No, nothing.
Okay, well, have a motion to adjourn?
Very good, I made the motion, will you adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Meeting's adjourned.